I'll call this board supervisor meeting to order. And we'll start out with the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Dennis Greer, our maintenance department here, and then followed up by Mike Sage with the prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the Father, we sure thank you for our country and we thank you for our community. And we sure do realize, Lord, there's a whole lot of folks clamoring to get in here, not many clamoring to get out. So that just shows us all how he blessed us through the years. Lord, for Smith County, we thank you for the privilege of living here and the family feel that we have, knowing, loving these precious folks in this room tonight. And so for our elected board supervisors, we just thank you for it and ask you blessings on them and their family. Touch Mike in his recovery from his knee replacement. And everybody else, Lord, needs a touch from you, we certainly ask for that. But we pray, God, for this board, thank you that they want to acknowledge you by having someone have the indication, we appreciate that. For whatever business is carried on tonight, old business, new business, we just pray for continued, whether solicited or not, nor for just very keen insight into issues, patience, wisdom, we're grateful. So bless these board members and their families in this, bested as activities and all the business here this evening. Thank you, Lord. We lay this petition for you coupled with our praise and continued thanksgiving. Amen.
Amen. All right. Appreciate you. We need to, to be heavy, we need to adopt the agenda, do we have any amendments to it? Have a motion tonight?
Send it.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise. Aye. I don't believe we have any special recognition tonight, other than Mr. Sturges, good to have you here.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Good to be here.
It's a wonder what they can do with medical science nowadays, isn't it?
It is. It really is.
Minutes of the previous meeting, May 11th meeting, which is our attachment one, and the May 27th meeting, attachment two. Do we have any corrections or changes? Hearing done, do I have a motion that we adopt them as presented?
I have a truth first.
In a second.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise?
I'm going to abstain because I was not able to make the statement.
Okay. Sounds good. And thank goodness we don't have a public hearing tonight. We got those all out of the way last time. Now we're down to Ms. Janice Orr. Let you have the floor. Although we know you, would you please state your name and address? Bill Baker.
I'm Janice Orr. I live in Saltville at 548 Campbell Drive. And I am here today speaking to you, not for any particular organization or government body. I'm speaking as a concerned citizen, a person who works as a volunteer in the tourism business. And there have been some happenings that have taken place in the last month or so, dealing with tourism, that I feel has a definite impact on the tourism aspects that I work in. And I am speaking to you as a volunteer with concerns there. My biggest concern is that the Tourism Board voted to take the Tourism Center out of the H.L. Bonham Regional Tourism Center and the Bonham House. And it has and will have a definite impact on the town of Saltville, the Museum of the Middle Appalachians, the town of Chilhauy, and I think all other parts of the county. I met at the last Tourism Board meeting and expressed my concerns there and the effects that it is going to have. And the biggest question that I had was why? Why are you taking it out of a place that has, according to the Virginia Tourism Corporation, the best location of a regional tourism center in the state of Virginia? It's right there off of the interstate. The people come off and it's, it's there. They don't have to go around to a little town and go up and down the streets looking for a sign that's usually not very big. And they don't have to look for an office in some obscure building somewhere. It's right there. And as many times as I have worked with the State Commission, they always say that. You have the best place in the state for an office. So I asked why? And the reasons that I was given was, like many other things, was budget. They couldn't afford it. They didn't have the funds to go into or stay into that building. Now, the building was donated to the town of Chilhauy and I suppose in one sense, Smith County, to be used as, as that Tourism Center and for those needs. The other thing that I was told is that they couldn't get volunteers. Now, I know I try to recruit volunteers and I am a volunteer. And I know the problem there. And yes, it is difficult to get people to dedicate themselves to something, especially when it doesn't pay anything. But there are people here who do care. The other thing that I was told was an issue, was that in this four, I'll call them partners in Smith County, that are responsible for supporting financially the Tourism Board here in the county, is that some of those partners were not paying their full share. Now, I don't know who is and who isn't paying their share. I guess I could go around individually and ask, but I may or may not understand what they tell me. But that was one of the reasons that was given to me as to why they wanted to leave. Now, since I went to that meeting, there have been some changes, I think, I call them changes made, that have developed. I guess I should say that, that have developed. The first one is that I hear that the Smith County Chamber is moving into the H.L. Bonham Center. Now, they are in sort of the same business as the Tourism Center is. And they are capable of handling tourism and, excuse me, and visitors who come into the county. So I don't see that as a problem, but I think historically there have been issues with that. And again, I don't know what's in everybody's heart here, but I get that feeling. With that, the new Tourism Director, I was told, is going to serve out of three offices across the county. So that means that she will have an office in Marion, one in Chilhauy, and one in Saltville. Well, I'm here to tell you, I don't want her in an office in Saltville. I want her in an office in the, in the Bonham House where she can meet the visitors that come off the interstate looking for something. If she's in an office someplace else, they're not going to find her. And I'm sure you all have been in the situation where you've gone off the interstate looking for some help and there was a sign that said Visitor Center, and you get off and you don't know where it is. So I want her in that office where she can grab those people that come off the interstate looking for help and can give them direction. Now, we are eight and a half miles from the interstate. And if we're going to get anybody over there, they're going to have to be directed to come. They're going to have to be told, go on, cross the mountain, eight more miles. And yeah, they may have found that on their telephone, but they don't know the details of getting there and what there might be when they, they do get over there. So I am concerned. I know that when the Tourism Center closed last March with the rest of us, that there was a tremendous drop in people who were coming. But everybody was having those decreases. And then when we reopened in the summer, we still had nobody coming. There was nobody over there to, to tell them to come on or invite them to come on. So we've got Amanda moving all over the county. And if you've ever worked in a place where your office was in different places every day, you know that you forget and take all your stuff with you. And when you go to look for a file or you go to look for a letter, you can't find it, oh, it's in the other place. Another thing that I am concerned about is that the Virginia Tourism Commission requires certain qualifications for you to be an affiliated Tourism Center. I don't know all of those regulations, but I do know that they do have requirements about how far you are from the interstate. You can't get any closer than the Bonham House. You have to be open five days a week. You can choose those days. You have to be open six hours a day. You have to have restrooms that are available before and after hours. You have to have a snack area machine. You have to have information services. And you have to be ADA compliant. Now, let's say that you take the Tourism Center out of the Bonham House and you move it someplace else. I venture to say that, that you are going to in a couple of years be saying, we need to open up a new Visitor Center. Well, if they took the signs down off of exit 35, and now you're going to ask to put them back up, I don't think you know how much it's going to cost you. I had a little 24 by 18 sign that was lost. And they were to charge me $700 to replace it. VDOT doesn't do that anymore. It's a private organization operating out of Texas that will put your signs up for you if you pay for them. So my solution to this problem is to put both of those organizations in the Bonham House. With two different organizations and two different sources of money, you ought to be able to put your funds together and meet the budget on that. I think the two ladies who are involved are, can handle working together. I think that they can work together, work out a schedule, and make it so that somebody is there all the time. And if that's a problem, then I suggest that a, one assistant be hired to work for both of those ladies, both of those offices. And I think that that person could also be the one who serves so that, that Amanda can go out when she needs to and Sarah can go out into the public when she needs to, and that will leave somebody there to meet our visitors to Smith County. Share expenses, share resources. When it comes down to technology, that was the other thing, is that technology is taking the place of literature and brochures. About 80% of the people who come to the museum are senior citizens. They're over 60 years old. They don't use their telephone that way. And they're tickled to death to see that we have literature that we can give them. They also find out they don't have telephone service over there. And I'm afraid when Amanda goes over to Saltville to work in her new one-third office, that she's going to find that there is very poor internet service which she's depending on. And if she doesn't have a Verizon telephone, she's not going to be able to talk to anybody. So I'm asking you, and I know that you don't budget either one of these people, but I would like for you to find out who is and is not paying their fair share and help to meet their budget needs for both of these very, very important positions and, and offerings that this county needs. Tourism is the way. It's going to happen. It is happening. You all are seeing that. And it doesn't come as a gift from a volunteer. I won't be there that many more years. I appreciate the time. And Mr. Clark, is there anything you want to add?
Chair.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just as a follow-up to the proposed schedule for the Tourism Director, it's my understanding that also the chambers can have three offices, is that still part of the plan? So would the same concerns apply as far as supervision of that position as well as with the Tourism position?
I have no idea. I, I was told today that the chamber office is going to be at the Bonham House. Mr. Um...
I had understood it was, she was going to be proud, like, has three different offices too. I just was asking for an update on that.
Well, John maybe can speak to that. He's kind of over the Bonham House.
I've not heard that meeting, the chamber meeting, but I have been, just recently went on board.
Other meetings, I think.
The, that I know that the, the main office is going to be at the Bonham House at Chilhauy. And if there is some other, I know right now she's working at her house, but her plans are moving, I believe, John correctly?
After July 1st, yes.
After July 1st.
And will she still have offices? When I was on that board where the plan was to be three different locations, so maybe that's...
I've not heard that. I'm not saying it's not the case, but I haven't heard that since I've been...
Well, I don't care who it is and which chamber or Tourism, I just don't think it's fair to them to make them work out the three offices. I've been in that position.
I think it's confusing to the public even.
Yes.
And trying to find where they are, it's hard to supervise these positions. I know there's a, a good benefit for sharing responsibilities, one company or not. But I'm hearing criticism from the public who pays these bills, that they can't find people sometimes. And that's my main concern. We have to report back to the taxpayers. And this is not just an endowed position for anybody. You know, if you don't show up till 10:00 and you leave at 3:00, somebody's going to have to be accountable for that. So, I mean, not, I'm saying Tourism or Chamber. So it seems like we've got a little bit of an issue here between these two organizations.
Well, when somebody is hired to work a job that doesn't have specific hours from 8:00 to 4:00, and they have to go to a meeting that lasts from 5:00 till 10:00, or they have to go to have an event on the downtown streets of Marion or Chilhauy, or they have to go on Saturday and work at a cleanup event, there are personnel laws that forbid people to work more than their 40 hours a week. And it's complicated, but I know that there are regulations because I've had to deal with that at the museum.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
So if you can't work all those hours, you've got to take the time off somewhere.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate the time.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. A friend of mine, John Morgan, used to say and does say, the best way to start is at the beginning. Let me just brief the board where this all started. About a year ago, the chamber was partially funded and one year defunded by, by a town, actually by the town Marion. Sarah approached me, the, the chamber director, or I approached her about, well, we've got a billion down here for the Tourism Association. Why don't you come down here? Be a win-win situation, in my opinion, where you have utilities, the town Chilhauy takes care of the maintenance of the building, and the Tourism Association pays the utilities about $400 or $500 a year. I thought it was a win-win. I talked to the previous director, who retired, Ron Thomason. He wasn't as gung-ho about it, but he asked me to go to the board. So I went to the board. A vote was taken, three to two, three for it, two against it, or three for it, extension for the chamber to move in the building, perhaps hire an assistant or, and then have the utilities. Where attorney said the lease that was signed but, between the town and the Tourism Association, gave the Tourism Association the complete use of the building. And the lease had to be amended. So I asked that the lease be amended. This negotiation began on for about a year. And I asked for a couple of other things while we were there. And one was for a attorney. I think, Sean, you gave the board the town statement after the termination. I think you have that in front of you. Our attorney suggested the lease was perpetual. He said, number one, that's a big flaw. So I asked it be put for 10 years from the starting date. The second thing I asked was the chamber being allowed to go into the building. The third thing I asked was that the town and the Tourism Association could terminate the lease in 90 days with cause. Because the old contract said Tourism Association can terminate whenever they wanted to, which evidently they did. But I was asking, it only be done with cause and the town have that same right. And the fourth thing, which got controversial, and I understand it to a degree, I asked for some cost sharing between, since all the localities in the county were using the building, I asked for a cost sharing on that. Well, that was bucked to an extent. And I understand it is a town's building, but we'd spent over $40,000 on that building in five years, and I was afraid the roof was going to be next. If that failed, then the town was going to go back to $2 per capita, which all the localities signed on to in 2009. Right now, I've been there seven years, the town's been paying $4.25. We just sent an $8,000 check to the authority back in August, or back in April before it all broke down. So anyway, almost out of the blue, we were given notice, I found that second-hand, the mayor and I, second-hand, that the lease has been broken. No explanation given. It was broken because they could break it. Our representative unfortunately voted abstention, but I think she devoted no, but each locality has an appointee on there. That's the situation as it is now. As far as coming to the office in Chilhauy, I have no idea where the office is going to be. We had an office. Again, we were paying 425 the whole time. I think the county was not paying quite that much because at the time they didn't have a bills tax, but that's, that's the county's business, not mine. But I guess this is a done deal, but the town Chilhauy, by the deed of gift, we have to have a regional association in there, Tourism or Regional Development. We've got the chamber going in there. I also might put an office, a special events coordinator. We might put that office in there, that's a regional development too. So we're fine as far as the deed. What I'm concerned about when you, and I'll just say this, when you take it out of the location that Janice has talked about much better than I can, what a great location it is, particularly in relation to Saltville and, and Chilhauy, you bring it here, you're asking someone to come off interstate to the building no one can see, pass a prison with razor wire on it. Well, you know, welcome, Smith County. But that's, I just, I don't quite understand that. But that's the situation right now. We are where we are. I'm working with Amanda, met with her today, great individual, will help the county a lot about vacating the building and moving the chamber in. As far as the chamber, I understand they're leaving the Finnick building and they're coming on down here in Marion, and they're coming to the Bonham building. Their budget is so strapped that I don't think they can afford a couple of buildings. And we're not going to charge them rent. They were paying $500 a month on the Finnick building. I think that's public record. We're not going to charge them rent. And again, if they were there jointly, and maybe that decision, I guess it has been made by the Tourism Association. If that decision's been made, then it's been made, but I just thought it was a win-win situation and it escalated to this. So I'll, I'll stop and be happy to answer any questions.
I have a question, but I just, I just have a comment. I guess I'm, maybe I'm being too simple about this, but I, I have said for seven years that Tourism, what Tourism does, what the chamber does, and what economic development does, go hand in hand. So I don't see any reason why we would not have those two entities in the same building and sharing expenses and sharing an administrative assistant and doing what's best for the county overall. And, and for me, I understand that there's a, this person did this, this person did that, this person did that. Like, I kind of flashed back to middle school for just a second, but I really feel like there needs to be a conversation with the town of Chilhauy, with the chamber board, with the Tourism Board. And I guess I'm just having a hard time wrapping my head around the fact why those three entities can't sit in the same room together and figure this out for the betterment of the county. Because Tourism plays a major role in economic development, and anybody that doesn't understand that is so disconnected from the world today that it's unbelievable. But I would encourage everybody who, I'm not on Tourism Board, I'm not on the Chamber Board, I have nothing to do with any of it, but I am a citizen in this county. I do represent this county on this board, and I want somebody to figure it out because this is asylum and there needs to be an answer that, that best serves the community.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
You know, I've said many times, I think Tourism is imperative to this region, that we have a lot of potential here in Smith County. I do think personal personalities can come into play and some behind-the-scenes things can be played, and that's the unfortunate thing that I believe has happened here. We increased our funding to the chamber last year significantly, Lord, I think, with your recognition. I don't have a favorite for Tourism or Chamber. My ideal situation would be for the best work... My ideal situation would be for them to work together for the best use of taxpayers' money and to serve this community. Now, when personality starts to happen and power plays happen behind closed doors and there's friendships, then that takes it to a whole other dynamic, and that's where we lose everything. So I think it's imperative that both parties, Chamber, you know, put aside personal power plays and work with tourism. I think we have an excellent tourism director. And I think we're gonna have to work together. We cannot have it a semantic thing of net of just words. We're gonna have to put everything on the table and recognize who's got what agendas and eliminate them. So I think there's more here that needs to be added.
Well, Ms. Laura, I agree with you, but I've been negotiating with Tourism Authority in the Chamber for over a year, but I can't negotiate with the Tourism Authority when they pull the rug out from under us to say, we're leaving. And they have the right to do it in the lease. And then I have to go to Plan B after that.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
I like Sarah Whitby as an excellent director.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not on that board. I know some members of our board are on the Tourism Board. And I know there's different discussions at different groups like the Smith Club and all that. So I don't know what the dynamics are behind the scenes. Maybe somebody else has more information as to where those decisions came from. I feel like we've got to work together. We can't use taxpayer money. I mean, we gave the Chamber thirty thousand more dollars last year during a time of pandemic, and she went furlough. I was on that board, but the executive committee made that decision. It didn't come before the whole board. This type of administration has got to stop. These are taxpayer dollars. I'm not her friend. Maybe other people are close friends, but this has got to stop. We've got to represent the people in this community. The average income here in Smith County is forty thousand dollars compared to a national average of sixty. And we're asking people to put their partner money up. We make decisions, and we, do we have the courage to go out and base people then? When we're making personal decisions based on friendships, and maybe somebody shows up at ten and leaves at three, and you can't track them down the rest of the day? I have a real problem with it.
Well, I have, I have no control over the Chamber operation. I will say, in Chamber's defense, there was a heck of a lot of offices that closed down for the better part of two thousand twenty, but I can't answer any of your concerns about the working hours there.
We increased our funding there, and evidently that employer was drawing federal unemployment. So that tells me, just from a simple accounting perspective, there should have been money left over. And, you know, when we talk about tight budgets, I understand tight budgets. I know there was a time when that was a tight budget. But also, we have to make allowances when things aren't quite so tight and other games have been played, you know? Don't just have an executive committee. If you have a whole board, the whole board should be involved, especially on important decisions like that. When you go behind the scenes and contact town managers without bringing it to the board of supervisors, and then all of a sudden there's a game play that the towns catch the funding to tourism and give it to the Chamber, well, right there, we're kind of divisive. Instead of coming to the table with clean hands and a sincere heart to really manage things the best way we can, instead, we have some game playing going on. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead. I won't come over and hug your neck. You've got it spot on, is anything I've heard you say since you've been on this board. And it's gotta end someday.
It has to end.
I agree. It's a great location for tourism, and I got no problem with the location. I think, I think the problem runs deeper than where you talk, and I think it's personal and internal. And who suffers? The people of Smith County. You know, what the answer is? I don't know. But, you know, I'm not real high on some of the things the Chamber do. I don't wanna get into that. There's some areas, when in my area, that the Chamber had something to do with it. To me, like, some people out of the office benefited personally on it. And Sean knows exactly what I'm talking about. You know, we've got some messes we need to clean up. Our board ain't here just to appropriate money and grow this county, just to run this county and make sure things is run right. And Judy, you're spot on.
Well, Mr. Chairman, and this is all I have to say. I cannot serve in good conscience on this board and sit and not express my sincere concern when I see things happening. That's why I'm here, and I think that's what the citizens expect. And I think it's time for us to get about the business of managing this county appropriately.
I think the Chamber and the Tourism need to get together. And if they can't settle down like professionals and work it out, then we need to stop our money from somewhere or another. We need to get some new people. I, I agree with you on the location, John. It's a perfect location. I hate its mood. I don't know, Charlie knows more about that than I do. But I don't think this has anything to do with location. I think it's internal.
Me too.
I don't disagree. I could add some comments, but I don't disagree.
I think that's about putting them together years ago.
You know, I don't, I don't care if them people's name is Billy Joe or what. If they can't do their job, they need to get out.
I, I agree. I won't say any more. Let, let me talk, respond to Judy. I think you were talking about the town of Chilhauie funding. We funded the Tourism Association four twenty-five for at least seven years. But when the lease was pulled, and when the Chamber was going there, then they're gonna start paying all the utilities. So we shifted a thousand dollars from Tourism to the Chamber to help make up that utility cost. So I'll, I'll take responsibility for that, but it's just simple math. But we're funding what we were at, what we committed to do back in two thousand nine when the four-party agreement was made. But I, but I think they're, yeah. No, I won't respond. I, I agree with you.
Yeah, I mean, I, I appreciate where you're at. I appreciate what the town is trying to give us something and a good location for tourism. But I don't, I don't think that's the issue here. I think we need to send a clear message. You're gonna do your job, but you're not gonna get any funding from us. And we may not acquire you, but we can shortcut your paycheck. And there's, there's some things that I've seen out of the Chamber that just, it don't add up with me. And, and if I need to go public with it, I can, but, you know, white's white and black's black. And if those two people from a Tourism and a Chamber can't sit down and work it out, we either need new people, or we need to go back one organization and go with them. You can't play that game.
Well, I think the two directors would go along very well. I think they work together well, but it goes, there's also other parties involved in that, but...
It's a shame because I don't know any better location. And, and I get, it's, you know, it's a pretty house. It's right there off the interstate. You don't see what you see. But what's inside that house needs to be good personate, and right now, something's wrong. You may know more about that than I do.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna comment on here in a second after everybody else has come down. I'm the chairman, I'm the chairman of the Tourism Board. A year and a half ago, we had no thoughts of closing the Tourism Center down. John came to us, wanted the Chamber to move in after some discussion. And it, it wasn't an easy discussion. We voted to, okay, bring them on in. We'll have a room set aside, and we can have it. Then we hired Amanda, and this is, that was done before we, I think, before we hired Amanda. And then we realized that we were putting all of our efforts into a one-house, one-location center for tourism. When we looked at the past history of how people were becoming aware of Smith County, our websites, our brochures and things like that were much more good, excuse my English, use of the money than to try to keep the house going. So, when we got into this, okay, we're gonna have to do this, this, and this, we realized that, you know, we were paying money just to have a location that in two thousand and nineteen, before the epidemic, the pandemic hit, we had two thousand, two hundred visitors to that center. We get that many website hits in a month. We felt like our time and money was better spent developing Smith County's websites and doing our marketing in that direction, and not be worried about being there six hours a day, five days a week, getting people to staff that. We didn't, we didn't hire someone to be a house sitter. Because that's what we were trying, we were basically saying, we want you to be a house sitter. Her time and effort could be better spent elsewhere. And because of the, what, you know, if we didn't do that, we were gonna lose funding here, we were gonna... We just decided it was better to cut our losses, just get away from the house. And basically, we do not have a Tourism Center in Smith County now. We have websites. We have other means of media communication. But our brochures and some locations is, is the gist of what we have out there as far as the visitor center. And after we did, I don't know if it makes any difference or not, but if you've been watching the news, Abboton and Bristol are doing the same thing. So we started a trend, I guess, getting rid of, getting rid of the original centers. But, you know, we're not in the same situation we were three or four years ago. People are not traveling. They were using us, the ones that did stop in were using it for a rest stop, which is fine. But we were not getting the, the feedback we were getting is we weren't getting as many people stopping as we were paying to get. It was costing us too much for stop. So that's why we chose to terminate, terminate the contract and just, and as far as Amanda having three locations, she has one office here in this building. And for, the town of Saltville has asked that she be over there some. And we were trying to, trying to help each town by having her available if they wanted her. If, I'm sure she'd just soon sit in one office, and when she's in the office, a lot of her work is done outside the office. So the fact that she's here five days a week, eight hours a day, if she is, she's probably not doing her job. So that's where tourism is on that. Any comments? Anybody have questions for me?
No, I mean, what you say, it makes sense. I figured some things up for me. The conversation I was getting from the speakers was they might have been, some people didn't wanna be together, but you'd laid it out totally different, so...
And I think Amanda and Sarah both have talked, and I believe they can work together. They've, they've already done a couple of projects, small projects together, and that's not gonna be a problem for those two to work together. And I just think we need to look at tourism as a whole, be it through Chamber, be it through Tourism. And even our economic development person here at the county, we need to all be coordinating together and moving forward. And we're, we're fighting a battle that we don't need to be fighting.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
I totally agree. I think it's imperative that we move beyond what we've been experiencing. I do think there are problems. I mean, now it sounds all warm and fuzzy, but there have been some serious problems in the past. And I do think it's time to get on with business.
Thank you, John.
Sure, I forgot to give my name and address. John Clark, 2654 Saltville Highway, Saltville. But I am representing the, I did represent the town of Chilhauie. Thank you.
We will get to citizens' time, so that's what you're here for. Our next order of business is financial status report. Lisa Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You should have your financial reports there in your packets. The first one we'll look at is the revenue summary by fund. And this is revenue collected from July twenty twenty through May thirty-first of twenty twenty-one. In that report, if you go to the back page, again, it's broken down by funds and the general, general fund. But if you go to the very last page for the total one, the current, through May, the current amount for May was eight million, nine hundred forty thousand, six hundred ninety-nine dollars and fifty cents collected. The year-to-date revenue collected through May thirty-first was eighty-six million, nine hundred sixty-five thousand, one hundred ninety dollars and fifty cents, leaving a balance to our adopted budget of thirteen million, nine hundred seventy-nine thousand, four hundred fifty-eight dollars and thirty-four cents. That's the revenue summary. The next report that we have is the expenditure summary by fund. Again, it's broken down by fund. If you flip to the last page for your final totals. The amount expended through May thirty-first was seven million, seven hundred twenty-one thousand, four hundred fifty-four dollars and forty-one cents. The year-to-date amount from July twenty to May thirty-one was seventy-seven million, eighty-five thousand dollars, eighty-five thousand, four hundred forty-eight dollars and thirty-one cents, leaving a remaining balance of twenty-three million, eight hundred fifty-nine thousand, two hundred dollars and fifty-three cents. So at that point, we were trading about nine million, eight hundred eighty dollars more in revenue collected than expended by the county at this point. The next report we have is the Treasurer's Office County expenditures and appropriation report. The bank balance as of May thirty-first was fifteen million, four hundred forty-eight thousand, eight hundred eighty dollars and four cents, with the unspent appropriations being one, three million, one hundred ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred sixty-one dollars, leaving a remaining balance of twelve million, two hundred forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and nineteen dollars and four cents. The right column shows where those appropriations are located. They have not been seen yet. And on the next page is your uncollected. Smith County Water and Sewer, there's an uncollected balance as of May thirty-first of two million, four hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred twenty-three dollars and eighty-six cents. On your uncollected county taxes, year two thousand through twenty nineteen, there's an uncollected balance of two million, nine hundred twenty thousand, six hundred thirty-five dollars and forty cents. And then the uncollected county taxes for twenty twenty are one million, one hundred seventy-seven thousand, one hundred eighty-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents. Along with that report, you have the Treasurer's Accountability. It is the Treasurer's Office report that shows by fund the fund balances. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Lisa? There are none. We'll move on. It shows we have enough to pay our bills. So I'll move into our, our yellow sheet paper that you got in front of you. And I'm just gonna read the bottom line for each segment. The total county appropriations include and carry over one million, nine hundred ninety-five thousand dollars. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? Social Services, four hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? School operating funds, seven million, five hundred twenty-one thousand, five hundred eighty-nine dollars. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstention.
We have one abstention. School debt and capital outlay, two million, two thousand, six hundred fifty-five dollars. Any discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise?
Abstention.
One abstention. EDA Fund Four, five thousand, six hundred fifty-seven dollars and eighty-four cents. Any discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? Sheriff's Fund Seven Forty-Eight, page ten, four hundred and fifteen dollars. Any discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? And finally, Recovery Court Fund Seven Forty-Nine, one thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars and forty-eight cents. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? All right, thank you. Now for citizens' time. We got a few minutes set aside here. Did anyone sign up for it? I don't see all these head shakes. Now's your chance to tell us what you think.
I think they're here for something else.
Well, you can talk for this too. No one signed. Anyone really wishing to speak? There ain't none. I'll close citizens' time. All right, now we're gonna get into old business. Special use permit request by Craig Hunter for service business.
Okay, in your, in your packets, you have a summary memo from Mr. Williams.
Okay, in the, in your packets, you have a summary memo from Mr. Williams regarding the planning commission meeting. Um, as you can see, there were apparently quite a bit of discussion, two different votes, both of, both votes failed for loss of, or lack of majority, so in consequence, there is no true, uh, recommendation at this point to the planning commission, so it, uh, the, it comes to the board with, without recommendation.
So, as Truman says, the buck stops here, so we need a recommendation or motion one way or the other.
Mr. Chairman, I speak.
Yes.
That's in my district. The people sitting in the back, uh, three ladies and one gentleman, probably owners of jointed mills. I met with them today. They're still not feel good about it. I have a picture on my phone that I'll, if I had to show you, if you'd see it, or if you can take my word, or what do you want? The hogs are now, uh, the trash, there's a big trash pile piled up. I'll pass it down. Something that could have been easily kicked up by a good neighbor. I mean, if you can't clean your trash up, you're not a good neighbor, in my opinion. So, our special use permit, uh, to obtain one, and these people highlight this, so they make my job easy. It says it will not adversely affect other property in the area which is it located. Well, junk cars and tow and service, they're going to affect somebody's property, so it didn't meet it there. Must have direct access on a public road which can safely and adequately handle the automobile and truck traffic, get ready. Only way that could happen is come out on 107. The other one is there is suitable provision for protection of privacy on jointed property which is now in residential use or may develop into residential use. I sit and watch the planning commission because this was in my district. They were very, very split on it. Mr. Harper really didn't come with a good plan other than he was going to string some block water and privacy fence to block the cars off. If this was beside my house, I'd be concerned, and I met with these people today, they don't want this. They don't want what they got, but their stuff was some. So, I make a motion, and we deny this permit at this time, based on the fact, he admitted the special use, and we do not have no recommendation out of the planning commission. I mean, if we're going to do a special permit, it ought to be a good special permit. I don't think this is one. So, that's my motion to deny it.
Okay, we have a motion, have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion in a second. Now we can have a discussion.
I'm sorry.
That's fine.
May I ask a question?
Go right ahead.
I know the last special use permit, we had a lot of questions, and we, we sent it, but I guess, I guess we voted it down and sent it back. I feel like with a split vote, it's hard for me, because, you know, we appoint people to the planning commission, we trust their recommendation, and with this one, it's half yes and half no, so I don't really want to be the, the tiebreaker, because I feel like they're the knowledgeable ones about it. I would rather see this maybe rehashed out or brought back to us in some way where it's feasible for both parties, but I don't know how everybody else feels. I've, I've got different thoughts.
I, I think, if I may, I think we, we've already had, we've sent it back, and, and, you know, it came before, what, October a year ago, something like it, and, uh, I, I don't think sending it back's going to do us any good. You know, the representative of that district, uh, feels counterpoint on the planning commission, he, he chose not to vote at all, uh, which, that, that, to me, that tells me volumes, and I just think, you know, the buck, as I said, the buck stops here. We've got to make a decision one way or the other.
May I ask what, how does that speak for you? Because I, I feel like if somebody doesn't vote, then they don't know how, they don't know the right answer. So, i- is a silent not voting, is that a don't do it, and I just don't, I'm not brave enough to speak up and say that, or is it a, I really don't know what to do, and I'm going to abstain because I don't have enough information?
That's the way I took it.
So, for me, if there's not enough information, then it needs to be discussed further.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I'm not going to speculate on Mr. Campbell's not voting. Uh, he's a real good guy, and I'm not going to speculate. I did ask him why he was staying that night. I didn't get an answer, but I will. I appreciate Mr. Campbell. I think he's a good fellow, and I, I'm not going to sit here and speculate. You know, we denied this once before. This is, this is over in the North Fork District, and people are sitting back here against it. Uh, we don't have a clear plan to make this work. We didn't get it through the planning commission. Matter of fact, I think when we get done with this, there's a junkyard right on that road. You can call it what you want, it's a junkyard. There's thirty or forty vehicles setting the band. We need to go back and look at our ordinance about special use permits being allowed in commercial, in commercial, this, the, the scary thing about this, and I met with these people today for an hour, now, this is only half of it. This is their homes. Their homes are like that table right there, you could eat off the yard. Why, why wouldn't it be concerned? Why do they want this? I wouldn't want it. And, uh, this is allowed in commercial, and we need to go back sometime another to make this special use in commercial where we could at least say, you got to have a fence, you got to do this. You got a neighbor here that ain't even picking up his trash, and I want him hauling his vehicles. Hell, you don't know. And, and I'll stand behind my motion to deny it. This is the second time, if we deny it this time. It was denied, and the recommendation was turned down the first time by the planning commission, so, you know, it ain't something new. We've been here before.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
When they came back the second time, this is just clarification for me, is there, was there a difference? Like, was their plan better, or is it the same exact?
You was, you was, you was not here, right?
Right, that's why I'm playing catch.
If, if I was going to sell something to somebody, I would have had me a pretty little draw with an engineer drawing out a plant and put some flowers. I would have sold, he had no plan whatsoever other than he was going to, and, and we'll go back to the minutes. His first thought out, his fence, his security fence was going to be block guarded, woven wire. Well, that's not security. And then he didn't know what size line he wanted. He had no plan whatsoever. And even if he did have a plan, well, I'm not even going there. There was no plan. There is none. And if I'm going to be a productive businessman, I don't care where you're in business or what, you got to be a good neighbor. I would be a good neighbor. I wouldn't leave a pile of trash laying around that could be a mess, but I'm not going to send this on these people. I mean, this is why I got elected, to go and sit down with people like this and say, what do you want me to do? That's why I'm here, to represent these people. Now, if they was, if they, and I give them options, right? I said, now, look, we can do this, or we can, this is what we want. That's what we got elected for.
Right. And one last question for future land use, is that, is that zoning commercial? Do we have that?
Well, it's coming up. If you go back to the meeting, and maybe you can help me on Sean, the future plan is commercial, and this is what scares me, and this is why we need to go back to the ordinance committee. I ain't saying all our things is wrong. I'm saying when we allow, and I won't call it the junkyard, because when you get twenty, thirty vehicles, it's a junkyard. Drive you right out to midway and show you one. And, you know, I asked Clegg, I said, we got out there four corners across the road, Jimmy Hayden, towing business, thirty, forty banded cars, right up against the highway. And I asked Clegg, I said, well, you know, this is, this is getting pretty unsightly. I mean, I don't think you want to get it. It's commercial, it's allowed. Well, let's at least make it, put a fence around. Can't do it, you got to get a sheriff's report. Well, I'm sorry, we need to rethink what we allow and what we don't allow. We're going to have zoning. So, you know, I, I, I'm totally against, I, this needs to be voted down until something better comes up, and we need to go back and look at our ordinance, what we allow and what we don't allow in commercial.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Mr. Stevenson, uh, your points are really valid. When I read the minutes and saw the report back from the planning commission, uh, Mr. Atkins appointing Ms. Wagner is the one who made the motion, and it was pretty restrictive on why it would even be approved, and that it would not, the, the use permit would not even be issued unless the fence was built in certain criteria, and that kind of got my attention. I know before when Mr. Harper was here, he mentioned that he currently has pigs on that property, and that he may put as many as a hundred pigs, and I heard residents there say that they would rather have the pigs than this towing service. I find that hard to believe. I would not want a hundred pigs in my neighborhood.
I don't know if Mr. Harper put a hundred pigs, and I'm not trying to.
And I think that might be the thing, is doubted that he will do it, but, you know, there's a chance that he will do it. So, I just found that interesting, that that's the ulterior thing that may happen, so, you know, I hope that you all are happy with that, that they put a hundred pigs there.
Mr. Atkins represented was the one that made the motion, but she was very unclear about it for a long time. Uh, she had a hard time with it, uh, you know, and it was, if you're going to do special use, then it ought to be specific. You know, I don't know exactly every I T crossed, and, uh, you know, if this was a store, uh, I might, I don't know, I'd steal back the people I represent if that's what they don't want. They paid their taxes, they retired here, they have their yards, they ought to have some say in it if we're going to have zoning. If we're not going to have any say, then please, let's get rid of this mess, we'll go home early, let's just do away with zoning. We're not going to set some kind of rules. So, you know, I, again, I make a motion, we deny it at this time, let it come back up in a year now, if it's going to come up, and we'll hash it out, but it's not no laid-out good plan. And if you're going to be my neighbor, then I want a good neighbor. I don't want to bring one in, don't pick his trash up.
All right, we got that motion already. I, I'm, I'm against it, and what it boils down to me is, it's not a zoning question in that it's zone agriculture rule. We're not asking to be rezoned, which, you know, had he come, had he come before us to ask to be vote, zone commercial, we really couldn't ask him what he's wanting to put there, but that's not the way it's going. He, he, he's come to ask for a special use permit, and if I lived in that neighborhood, and knowing that the future plans for that property is commercial, I would want that first commercial property to be some nice brick building where all the operations are inside of the building and not out in, outside of the community. You know, it may have to end up with a large parking lot or something, but I would like for it to be something aesthetically beautiful to the community. I don't think this particular special use permit fits that goal, and therefore, I'm, unless he can show me something otherwise, I'm a no vote on it. And, you know, I'm siding with you again, Phil.
Well, I, I mean, I appreciate you. We're all here and so about ideals, and, you know, I sat with these people for an hour today, and I, you know, what if we get a privacy fence up, and what if we do this? What if we bring them out? And they wasn't totally resistant to it, but they're concerned about, even though we put restrictions on it, a good neighbor living up to it, and they got good concern because of the proof's in the pudding. So, you can put all the regulations you want, and I feel sorry for our attorney, because he has to sit here forever, and, 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 but, you know, enforcing these special use permits, they're scary. They're scary. You got to go to court, and the judge got to go, so why hang ourselves out there? Thank you, Jordan.
Any more discussion?
And Charlie, I, I talked to them too, and I know all the parties involved here, all my wife, you know, but they're, you just, you know, I, I don't blame them a bit, and I just hope that we get this straightened out with that rezoning before it goes into effect and creates a monster. We, we need to really put some restrictions on it once it does, because you're, you're going to have nothing to fall back on, and it goes into effect, there it is, so, you know.
I agree. We really need to look at some of our ordinances in our, and, and when I first come on the board, I was on it.
You're not.
And, and I made some mistakes about some things in commercial, like this is one of them, a junkyard's out of file of special use, but, you know, we, somebody ever who's on it, I need to go back and look at it again, because this property all the way down 107 is, in the future, supposed to come commercial.
Any more comments regarding this application? There ain't none?
I just have one question. I'm, we're talking about, well, the, in this situation, it's unfortunate that we haven't had an updated comp plan in ten years, something else that was kicked down the road, did?
It's coming.
Okay, that's what I'm going to ask. So, during that process, are we going to make sure that the ordinances are in conjunction with comp plan, because if not, we're always in our time.
Yeah, that, I think that's the only way to do it, right? To do the whole thing.
Because that's, that's how I base my decisions. Uh, number one, we want to be business friendly, I understand that, but also understand we need to listen to the citizens. We need to do what's best for the, the, the greater good of everybody, I get that, but also don't want to be the, be the red tape county that you can't build anything, and they're going to go to our neighboring counties, so I'm really having a hard time, and then the fact that the planning commission was, was hung on, on their recommendation is hard for me, but.
Well, one more time, now shut up. I agree with you. Uh, no, I don't. You know, our zoning committee needs to meet ahead before this planning thing comes, not zoning our ordinance, and we need to sit down, look at this, and talk about it, and, hey, these people aren't against progress. These people back here, they're school teachers, they, they, they pillars of the community. They're not against progress. They just want it done right. Now, I'll shut up.
No.
No.
I just think, you know, the question is, do we allow it, or if don't we? And I, if it's my neighborhood, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want it, so why would I want to put that on somebody else? I mean, had they come in and asked that they want to do a, a printing business there, it would all be indoors, I'd, I'd probably be, if he said no, I'd still be saying yes, but on this particular instance, I'm a, I'm a no vote on it.
You have a motion in a second?
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of, of rejecting the applications, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? I believe it was unanimous, if not, speak up now. Okay.
You're good for another year or so, anyway.
I'll take it. I'll be coming for bacon.
Yes. Y'all mind? So, we can get it before the child leaves.
That's right.
All right. I'll just go into the ordinance here. In the future, I'll move this ordinance back.
Well, that's good, because I tell you, I need all the help I can get. I, I, paperwork, you know. Paperwork and smart things are my, my thing, so I appreciate y'all taking time to meet with me and see, you giving me the paperwork, and I, you know, I'm glad it worked out.
I, I would suggest the board, uh, look at the ordinance as well, comparatively, with the topic. Thank you.
All right, we're moving into committee report recommendations. First is the Budget Committee with attachment five, and that's me. We met, probably want to holler Dennis out there, because we're talking about his, I seen him running around out the hallway there.
I'll shoot him a text message. They're, they're outside the door.
I thought he might want to come in here, because I saw him and, um, Mr. Coe Spencer out there, so, uh, and, uh, let's see, getting down, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but anyway, we have officially your 2021 Budget Amendment Number Nine requested by the school board. The school fu, uh, Smith County School Fund 009, an unexpected increase in state funding in the amount of, above that, seven hundred twenty-seven thousand, six hundred eighty-five dollars. In addition, a savings of three hundred thousand dollars throughout the school year in the transportation category, we're allowing the school to reallocate those funds to maintenance projects. Rural District Supervisor Judy Watt made a motion to approve the 2021 Budget Amendment Nine for the Smith County School Fund 09 as presented. High Valley District Supervisor Rory Dills seconded the motion, it was unanimously approved by the committee. Uh, so, they have asked to be able to use that money, and, uh, that's a motion, uh, motion from the committee to allow that. Any discussion? If not, I call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? Want a sanction? We, the committee discussed a public hearing that were held on May 11th concerning the Smith County proposal to increase the county water and sewer rates, Smith County Mills tax ordinance, and Smith County cigarette tax or, tax ordinance. No motion with, no action was taken on that. This is why the added, she thinks the county needs to start doing press releases for clearer understanding to the public and to having better information of what the county is doing, and I think we're starting to do it. I think I saw one the other day, or getting ready to be released, so.
Saturday.
You know, getting the information to the citizens is so important. You know, when we're seven up here trying to pass it out. But if we can get it through the newspaper and get their help, let them know what we're doing and what we're thinking about, we can better support the communities. So, uh, but there was no further business to discuss. The meeting was adjourned at three o'clock, three oh nine. Uh, going now to the personnel committee, section six. I guess, uh, Chris was absent as chair. Do you want to handle this?
Um, it's, it's, it's your pleasure. You would handle it because you were there. I was, I was not present.
What's that?
Let me do it.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, the personnel committee met in the office building on Wednesday, June first, twenty twenty one at two P M. Members present were Charlie Atkins and Atkins district supervisor and Chahi district supervisor Mike Sturgill. Also, uh, county administrator Sean Utte, administrative assistant Paula Harvey. Uh, called the meeting to order at two oh five P M. Uh, and Mr. Utte presented the following items for discussion. A request from the Chamber of Commerce. The county has been approached by the Chamber of Commerce for the county to consider providing the same partnership level as done with the tourism board, which will allow the chamber's executive director to be a county employee with relative benefits. With the arrangement with the tourism board, they reimbursed the county one hundred percent of the cost that the county incurred and that the same would hold true for the Chamber of Commerce. The county is also has a similar position with the Rye Valley Water Authority, but, but their staff position is only part time and does not include health insurance or B R S benefits. Mr. Utte reached out to tourism director Amanda Livingston to see if she could help locate a copy of the agreement between the county and tourism board that memorialized the arrangement. Mr. Utte has requested the county attorney help prepare a memorandum of understanding between the county and Smith County Tourism Board at a minimum. With the, with the understanding that the chamber will pay all costs incurred by the county similar to the tourism board and Rye Valley Water Authority. Atkins district supervisor Charlie Atkins made a motion to recommend an agreement for the county to serve as a personal fiscal agent and authorize the county attorney and county administrator to finalize a memorandum of understanding with the Chamber of Commerce with the expectations that there will be no costs for the county. Chahi district supervisor Michael Sturgill seconded the motion. It was unanimously approved. The meeting adjourned at two sixteen P M.
All righty. We have a motion, we have a motion from the committee. Any further discussion?
Can you break it down layman's terms for me or they won't go on our insurance and everything? Is it what this is about?
Yeah, but on our insurance and on our, uh, B R S, but any cost incurred, they will pay for it. It helps us, in my opinion, it helps us on our insurance because they're younger people. It increases our population and it spreads our risk out. It helps us look better to insurance providers.
So the chamber and the tourism is going to come with the money to pay for the insurance?
Tourism is already involved. They, they're already been, we've been doing it ever since day one. We're just adding chamber to that same. We're already doing that for tourism and for Rye Valley. Been doing it for years.
So what they basically do, and I don't mean this in a smart way, is they're going to pay for it, but they're going to come back next year and ask us for twenty thousand extra dollars in the budget to pay for it. Am I looking this wrong?
Well, we'll say no because they've already asked for it and it occurs and they got it. So.
But basically, that's where, where else do they get your money?
They have memberships with the towns and other private businesses, but we're the larger, largest payer.
Mr. Chairman, it might be good to have a financial statement from the chamber. I would like to have that.
I, I, I would, you know, I'd like to see it and maybe ask some questions on it and, you know, I, I, I got no problem. I get what you're saying. It helps their insurance. I, I, I don't know that I see the end that they're paying for it. In the long run, I think we're paying for it.
Also, Mr. Chairman, the tourism board is our financial statement and then.
We're working on that. We have not, we've not gotten one.
That would be very helpful to me to have both of those.
It's been one of our priorities to start getting it. We want this board to start getting monthly statements and we'd at least have quarterly statements.
Well, again, this is taxpayer money and I just can't sweep up a vote unless I can, I feel like.
Mr. Chairman, Sean, can you correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I think the idea of this agreement is simply the chamber is buying insurance for their personnel or whatever organization is. The county running its fiscal agent, they can get it cheaper if they come through the county insurance versus going out to Anthem and buying it on their own with a small group of two people. Um, and the benefit is they get a cheaper insurance rate. The benefit to the county is, as Mr. Atkins said, that largely makes their pool larger as far as people and risk. Um, and then it's just a cash flow through, right? The chamber, whatever we pay to cover the chamber's people, the chamber pays the county that reimbursement. You're giving the chamber money anyway. They, they go buy the insurance, whether they buy it through Anthem or they come back to the county and get it to the county system. They're still, they're still spending money on insurance that you're funding or the organizations who fund the chamber. That insurance cost is coming out of the chamber's budget and it's just whether it comes back to the county or it goes to some other insurance provider to provide that benefit.
Mr. Chairman, I think we understand that, um, basic.
I'm not trying to sway your vote. I'm just trying to tell you what I understand the agreement to be.
I think there's a basic understanding of that. Um, I would just like to see the financial position myself. Uh, and you mentioned that it's a younger group. Well, that doesn't mean that that person's always going to be there. Could eventually be an older person. So at this time in moment, it might, but that's subject to very fluid. So.
Is this something we got to do tonight?
Well, we have voted up or down. We voted down to say we want financials considered later.
I don't think.
Table the request.
You can table it and not vote on it. You do a motion to table it and then.
Well, we've got, we've got the motion already been approved. Do we not need to vote that down first?
They can withdraw. The guy who made the motion, the second.
It's a committee recommendation.
Committee recommendation.
Yeah, committee recommendation. I think you can still table it though. I think you could, the board, because it's coming from a committee. I think you can have a motion to table it and then bring it back up for the next meeting. And because it's not, yeah, I think you can do that.
I, you, you know, I, I don't think.
Still makes a motion to table it. Do you have a second?
I make a motion to table it.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion to second to table it the next meeting, get, trying to get financial statements from both organizations. Uh, any other discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed likewise. I'm going to say aye on that one because I think we should have gone ahead. We do need the financial statements. I agree, but I think we could have gone ahead and done the memorandum six to one. It's going to be different.
Yeah, I got no problem with it.
All righty. Our public safety committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The public safety committee met on June the first at eleven A M. Uh, in the meeting, Ms. Self and Mr. Sturgill absent members, Mr. Ratlove and staff president, Mr. Utte, Ms. Harvey, Mr. Crawford and Mr. Williams. Um, also present was our O M D, uh, Dr. Peter Bruzo and from the sheriff's, uh, department, Johnny Duaneu and Sheriff Schuler. Um, first item we discussed was the chief's meeting, which was held June third at six P M. Uh, the next item we discussed was the nine one one calls for the Conroch service area. Uh, what has been happening in the past is someone in Conroch dials nine one one. Uh, the call gets transferred to Grayson County. Grayson County dispatches Mount Rogers. Well, by the time all that happens, if, uh, if a truck leaves from Chihuahua, they could be in Conroch by that time. So after discussion, um, we, um, had a, a motion made by Mr. Sturgill to change the five fifty E S N Conroch area to reflect Chihuahua as being the primary responder with Mount Rogers being the secondary responder. And I seconded that motion. It was unanimously approved by the committee and that is a committee recommendation.
Any further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? Sounds like it's unanimous.
Right. The next item, uh, we discussed was, um, the need to have mutual aid agreements for all EMS services. Um, there's some parts of other counties that our agencies respond to and some parts of our county that other agencies respond to. So it's just a lot cleaner when we have, um, mutual aid agreements, basically with every, every county that touches us. So we're going to be doing that moving forward. Um, as you all know, we've had discussions about transitioning to E M D, emergency medical dispatch. Um, Dr. Bruzo is our O M D for that. He's also the O M D for Marion Fire and EMS, Chihuahua Fire and EMS. And, um, now with also Saltville EMS. Um, he discussed the need to have three dispatchers first per shift and the need for qualifications to, to do the E M D services. He advised he's going to meet regularly with those staff and request a monthly report to be sent to him for review. Um, so with, with this new program, there's going to be a lot of, um, quality control going on there, obviously. Next item, uh, Mr. Williams advised he recently met with Grayson County Public Safety Agencies and they have requested to use our county facility on White Top Mountain as additional communications site for their services and would be interested in a cost sharing agreement. Um, a motion was made by Chihuahua district supervisor Mike Sturgill to allow Grayson County Public Safety Agencies use of Smith County's communication shelter on White Top Mountain with the understanding that Smith County will seek reimbursement for utilities and request a percentage of capital improvement project costs that will be later determined. I seconded that motion and it was unanimously approved by the committee. That is a committee recommendation.
All righty. A committee recommendation. Any discussion? I have a question. I guess I need.
Sure.
Is that a, a, uh, acto, uh, tower? We just have a shelter there?
That, that's, that's what they need is the shelter.
The shelters.
Space in the shelter.
Okay. So it doesn't have an effect on the tire itself. As I was going to say, we probably need to get dirt.
I think they have their A C N.
It's.
Backup, yeah. It has the backup power.
Because I know when we put that in there ten, twelve years ago, we had a dickens of a time getting it approved with, uh, with the power company. They didn't, they didn't even want us there. So I don't want to do anything. I mean, I'm all for doing it if we can, but I want to make sure we got all our ducks in a row. Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? Sounds like it's unanimous.
And the last item we discussed is fire hydrant location, um, map for the county. We had a lengthy discussion about the need to develop a standard protocol for use by all water providers to ensure that fire agencies know when a fire hydrant is accessible and unusable. Um, we had some issues with, especially with mutual aid. If a, if a certain agency arrives on scene and they're not the primary agency for that area, they roll out their hoses, hook up to the fire hydrant and there's no water. It's like, oh, P S, that fire hydrant doesn't work. Well, as a member of the public safety committee, our fire hydrants better tag on work and they better be working good. So we're going to be, um, working on that in the future. So we'll hear more, more about that at a later.
May I come in? To take them out?
Go ahead.
And this is one thing I think you need to talk about in meetings and I'm going to defend it will be what fixes them hydrants. The hardest people on them is, is a way to open a hydrant and a way to close it. I'm sure you're aware of that, Mr. Crawford. Back in my tenure, the worst people using these hydrants is the fire department. Now, I don't want to go see no water there either, but reality is reality. And a lot of times they go open that thing up and spend it ninety mile an hour and then they shut it back down. And guess what? Just blow the sea out of it. The hydrant don't work. It ain't them four boys down there working in the water department's fault. Ain't Sean Yudd's fault. It's the fire department's fault. They ought to do what they're trained to do. And there's two sides to every story. The only way you're going to keep hydrants working is to make sure the people who uses them, uses them right. When you open one of those things up and there's three hundred pound pressure there, what you do has a whole lot to do from that hydrant line back. And my past experience here, we go out after a fire and yeah, the main thing is put the fire. The main thing is to take care of the hydrant if you want a hydrant to work. I've seen it blow lines to three hundred foot back. So you got a little more issue here than just saying, I want the county water department to make sure the hydrants work. It's going to have to be a team thing. And, you know, uh.
We actually talked a bit. I had a, a training program in my former job with, for that same thing. Actually, the fire department went out and flushed the, the hydrants so they could train on opening them up slowly and closing them slowly. So.
Some of the greatest training you ever had. And if they wanted to work two nights later, they'd take care of it that night. Because there's more things to do than just fix hydrants in a, in a water service. And, and nine percent of your hydrants are tore up by, by people who use them like fire departments. And I guarantee you, I know I was on the call, nine percent of the trouble is caused by. So we need to keep this in mind when we move forward, making sure hydrants work.
Sure. Absolutely. And I, and I totally respect that. I can only speak for the hydrants in my district, but i- in that case, there's not a urgency to, to fix hydrants and it's not, it's not due to the fire departments. That these guys are trained and they know how to open them. It's just lack of certain water authorities who are not interested in making progress on fixing their hydrant. So I think there's, it's a three-part thing. It's one, like you said, and then two, I think the, the water authorities.
Well, it's, it's, it's a team.
Absolutely. I appreciate that.
It's a team effort. But one thing I will say about Smith County, uh, even after I left, they, they worked really, really hard to keep all fire hydrants working. And it's a nightmare. It, it's absolutely a nightmare. Back when the Ridge Valley fire went on, we used to pull out a fire hydrant. We spent a week over fixing stuff.
Is that it for you there?
Yes.
I actually got in touch with Mr. Utte, I think, what, a week ago. Or a citizen called me where a asphalt company was hooked to the, our fire hydrants, filling up tankers. Water and they was laying asphalt, an independent asphalt company. I don't know who it was, but a citizen called me and said, did y'all let asphalt companies hook to your fire hydrants? I said, not that I know of. So I don't know what it was. It was too late to find out, but it actually happened. It's a lot of stuff that happened that way. I think this one's mine, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Yes, sir. Go right ahead.
Okay, we got.
Turn the mic on if you would, please.
I'm sorry.
It keeps going on.
You don't want me to say? Uh, Ms. X, Sandy Elphick sent us later on this. This is redistricting. I opened the meeting at one o'clock and it says under the provisions of the code of Virginia, section twenty four point two dash three oh seven, localities are required to comply with the following regarding voting precincts. It says each precinct shall wholly contain within a single congressional district, senate district, house of delegates district, and election district used for the election of one or more members of the governing body or school board for the county or city in each year ending in one, like two thousand eleven, two thousand twenty one, so forth. The governing body of each county shall establish a precinct boundaries to be consistent with any congressional district, senate district, house of delegates district and local election districts that was adopted by the appropriate authority on June the fifteenth of each year. If congressional district, senate districts, house of, uh, uh, delegates district or local election districts have not been adopted by the appropriate authority by June fifteenth of each year ending in one, the governing body may use the congressional district, senate district, house of delegates district or local election districts as such districts existed on June the fifteenth of that year. As basis for establishing the precinct boundaries to be used for elections to be held in November of that year. Such, such governing shall establish precinct boundaries to be consistent with any sequential changes to the congressional district, senate district, house of delegates district or local election districts. If the governing body is unable to establish a precinct with a minimum number of registered voters without splitting the precinct between two or more congressional districts, senate districts, house of delegates districts or local election districts, it shall apply to the board for a waiver to administer a split precinct. The state board may grant the waiver or direct the governing body to establish a precinct with fewer than the minimum number of registered voters. As permitted by section twenty four point two dash three oh nine, a governing body granting a waiver to establish a split precinct or directed to establish a, a precinct with fewer than the number of registered voters may use such a precinct for any election held that year. Given it the delay in redistricting authorities due to delayed census data, the state will be granting waivers for the occurring of the split precincts as detailed above. Under the pre- provision to twenty four point two dash three oh seven, Smith County has the following split precincts in need of a waiver. They are Sawal, Town boundary, Chilhawee, East Park, West Park, Wasanona. Where's that at?
Wasanona's in my district.
Oh, is it? I didn't know that. Oh, is it? I didn't know that. Royal Oak East and Seven Mile Ford. On a motion made by the Royal Oak District Supervisor, Ms. Judy Wyatt, suggested by myself, the committee unanimously agreed to recommend the waiver request to the full board for their consideration at this meeting. No further visits to discuss the meeting was adjourned at one oh seven. What we need to do is grant the waiver, request the waiver for this.
So we can do that.
Any discussion, that's committee recommendation? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? Sounds like it was unanimous. Moving on to the Water and Sewer Committee meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, the Water and Sewer Committee meeting was held on June first at one P M. In attendance to myself, Mr. Stevenson, Ms. Utte, Ms. Harvey, members, members absent, Mr. Atkins. I called the meeting to order at one oh five, and we only had one item to discuss, it was a request from Owen Rusty Cox. Mr. Cox owns properties surrounding the one oh seven water tank. The county PSA acquired the property in nineteen ninety-three from Mr. Cox, and the purchase agreement deed, the county is subject to the following expectations. The grantee agrees to maintain the road from Route one oh seven to the tank site in a condition as determined by the grantee to be adequate for grantee's vehicle. Grantee competes and agrees to maintain and keep the roadway in a reasonable fashion and in such way as to prevent materials used for the improvement of the roadway from migrating into the adjoining fields of the grantors. Mr. Cox stopped by Mr. Utte's office last week to let the county know that he will be paving the portion of his driveway from Route one oh seven just past the tank site, from that point to his house is already paved. He also shared a few pictures of some drainage issues that he requested be repaired, which Wally took care of in short order. Mr. Cox informed Mr. Utte that he had an estimate for the paving to be between twenty thousand and twenty-five thousand dollars for the county's portion. North Fork District Supervisor Phil Stevenson made a motion to deny the request to share in the cost of paving from Owen Rusty Cox, and Rye Valley District Supervisor Lauren Dale seconded motion, it was unanimously approved, and that is a committee recommendation.
Any discussion? Those in favor of denying the motion say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? Sounds like it was unanimous.
We adjourned at one oh eight P M, shortest meeting in, you know, I can't hear.
All right, moving into the budgeted documents now. We're moving down to the ordinance, twenty twenty-one cigarette tax ordinance. Mr. Utte, did you have some comments to make at this point?
Just to say that we held the public hearings as required, and the revenues that this ordinance would present would count for for this coming fiscal year is right at the hundred fifty thousand dollar estimate. And you've got, Mr. Farthing reviewed the ordinance, and we have it as drafted for your consideration. This would be a forty cent per pack tax. I will say that with county has adopted the forty cent tax. I understand Washington County is, has it on their agenda for their next meeting. Blaine County has, the towns in the county are expecting it, they're budgeting that forty cents and as well as other towns with full independence. The only ones that I know of that are not at this point are the Twin Counties with Grayson, Carroll, and the City of Galax, at this point.
All right, any, any questions? Hopefully yes. I guess we, first off, we needed a motion to approve the ordinance. Do I have that?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the ordinance for the cigarette tax. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? Hearing none, I guess we better go with a roll call vote on this one.
Uh, Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
No.
Dr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes, but I will have something further to say when we address the budgets, because I've had input from people in my district not wanting it. I completely understand their position, but given our budget requirements, and I think we'll talk about that more when we do the budget.
Ms. Deal?
Yes.
Mr. Call?
No.
All righty, thank you. Ordinance regarding the meal tax. Filing up on the public hearing held on May eleventh, that work was done by the Budget Committee, and ordinance by the board considered to enact a tax on preparing meals effective July one, twenty twenty-one. Mr. Utte, did you have any comments on that?
Yes, sir, I would just throw out that this ordinance would present estimated revenue of two hundred fifty thousand dollars to the upcoming budget and future budgets. It is a six percent tax on meals, which is equal to counties around us. It's less than Town of Marion and Town of Chilhawa, but it's equal to Town of Sawalls tax rate. It's less than other towns around us and surrounding counties.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve this?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, just a clarification. Mr. Utte, in reading some of the, I guess, definitions of things here, they're talked about under page sixty-seven, four point one dash eleven, seller is any person who caters or sells meals. And I had the passing thought go through my head, are concession stands like at the various schools or fundraisers included? They're excluded from all that, so it's just a, like a bricks and mortar or a mobile truck or something that it rolls around? Okay, so, very good, that was my only question, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, one question. Go ahead, Chair.
Is this in, this is a beverage tax too, right?
This does include beverage, yes, sir.
If you stop at a local store and buy your Pepsi, they say?
No, 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 this is only prepared meals, so that if you buy a beverage along with a prepared meal in a restaurant, so if you go to a restaurant, to a local store and get a hot dog and a Pepsi, a bottle of Pepsi, the hot dog has a tax on it, the bottle of Pepsi does not, because it's pre-bottled.
But if it's a fountain drink?
The fountain drink does count, it's a, yeah.
It throws a little bit of work back on our, on our convenience stores and places like that.
Just in past experience, a lot of times the computer systems are set up to bill the cover, but, yeah, it will have some.
Any other question? Good question, though. Hearing none. We had a motion, we had a second, all those in favor say aye?
Oh, we don't.
We better do a roll call.
Do we have a motion?
I don't, I don't have a motion on this one.
I dreamed that up.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion, okay, we have a motion now. We have a second.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second. Now we had the discussion.
May I say something on the discussion part?
I still think we're breaking the backs of small stores. I visit one today, talking about they ain't gonna practice anymore, you know, I don't know. I think we're, I think we're gonna see the end of small stores, it's gonna be cheaper for people to go to Food City and buy some biscuits and go home. So I, I, you know, I hear things of going through two hundred fifty thousand dollars during budgeting, cigarette taxes gonna give us a hundred fifty thousand dollars, that's scary, where's the money go? So, I'm against this.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote.
Ms. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
No.
Dr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Ms. Deal?
Yes.
Mr. Call?
I have it.
Five to two. Next, is the ordinance for the utility rate schedule? Once again, I'll turn it over to you, Sean.
Thanks, sir, this follows up on the recommendations we've received from Davenport and Company. You may remember, maybe six months ago, two months ago, where they had recommended a five percent this year and follow up with four years of two percent to be able to get to the pay-as-you-go efforts for any, basically any prevented maintenance items under a hundred thousand dollars. We had the public hearing and everything, and this five percent would equate to roughly a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars of additional revenues.
Do we have a motion to accept the ordinance?
So moved.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? I think if you tend to wanna vote no, and I mean, I think we all wanna keep costs down, but if you go back to our financial report we had tonight, our expenditures for the water and sewer was significantly more for the month than revenue, and if you look at the year, we're not in good shape again. So we've gotta stop that, but, you know, and I just don't think it's right, and I'm gonna pick on Phil's neighborhood, I just don't think it's right for someone over in the North Fork District that don't have water within two miles of their house to have their tax dollars being used to pay for water. I think the people who get into water and sewer should be the ones paying for it, so. With that, with that having been said, I myself would wanna vote for it, but any further discussion?
I just wanna comment right quickly, I'm confused when Davenport was here, and I've known the water has lost money for six years, but they said it was self-supported, but we spent the money in the general fund. What am I confused on, can you talk to that?
I need to do more digging, I don't, I.
Did I hear it wrong?
That's the way they looked at it, that's the way they saw it. Now, if you look back at the revenues versus expenditures, the last time we raised rates was in twenty sixteen. Before that, it was in the red for several years. For, for five year, four years, it was in the black after the twenty sixteen. This current year, we're in the, we're in the red. It were projected to be in the red next year without the five percent, but I still don't have a good sense.
I'm just confused, because when he said it that night, he caught me by shock.
Yeah.
And I, and I let it go instead of asking a question, but I'm pretty sure he said it was self-supported. But anyway, I know it's not, because I know of all the projects that's been out there. I just, I think we're, you raise minimum wage ten dollars, and you go through and you raise water rates, you raise everything. Why the devil did we even raise minimum wage, well, you know, it's ridiculous.
I don't know if I can clarify, I brought the report, but when he said self-sufficient, I don't think he meant like moving forward, we could have money left over where we would have to borrow to do projects, because it says any amount zero, so I think it was based on these numbers, it was basically just.
Well, it was very confused.
To build a fund balance?
Yeah.
Do what?
To build a fund balance?
Yeah.
Put some money in the water department fund to, as I said.
Well, these projects out there like Atkins is gonna have to be redone, and, you know, I hope this money, if you're gonna raise it, don't go to harm another employee, we actually put it back and do something good with it, because it hurts people when they have to pay more money. I don't care if it's five dollars a month or ten dollars a month, you hit them cigarette tax, food tax, and water tax, it hurts, and, 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 you know, so I hope it stays to redo the water and help the water.
The plan is to put it, to rebuild the reserve fund, yes, sir, to be able to do that pay-as-you-go repairs.
We won't be able to go back in that general fund, and it'll have to go to a different thing.
It'll be Fund Five oh one.
And the water has lost, and taxpayers shouldn't have to pay for it, but I hate seeing.
This is procedural thing, but I think to a certain extent, I think part of the problem that they had understanding that is the water department is operated out of the same checking account as the general fund. And I, I think that's what they were talking about, because all the water payments, all the water expenditures come out of the five, of the Fund One checking account. The water department, I have always argued that the water department needs their own checking account, but I never got there all those years, and I'm not gonna argue it now, but I think that was part of the confusion, is the money's, and the money's in there, and if it's in there and the general fund has a need for money, it doesn't say, well, that's water department money, that's money in the general fund checking, so it can be used. And I think that's what they were, they were going back to, it's just basically an accounting issue.
Mr. Chairman, just from my own understanding, why has that account not been restricted for that use then?
Good question, I've asked that question for, since two thousand and two, I think it is.
Yeah.
The water has lost so much money, if it been on their account, somebody would've probably hung their cell, I mean, it's scary. I mean, you know, it's just too many bad projects.
Well, I'm sorry, but today there's some mismanagement there, so.
I agree.
You know, we've made some bad decisions there, so.
But that's water under the bridge, we're trying to straighten out for the future, excuse the pun there, the water department, but trying to set it for the future, any more discussion on this rate increase? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
No.
Dr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Ms. Deal?
Yes.
Mr. Call?
Yeah.
All right, six to one. Resolution for the General County operation, attachment thirteen in our book.
In this one, I want to direct you to a resolution she had at your dais to consider before we consider the budget itself. Chairman and I spoke before the meeting, and he had a good point that I wasn't thinking about. I had originally put together appropriations resolution that included the tax rates for real estate, personal property, and machinery tools that we have to set. That is not on the agenda now, but we do need to set those three rates, we're not proposing any increases. So I would like to recommend that resolution that basically states the real estate rate will remain at seventy-four cents per hundred, tangible personal property at two dollars and thirty cents per hundred, and machinery and tools at dollar fifty-five per hundred. And again, those are no, not increases, those are level.
I got it, I'll be going ahead and make a resolution, because it's the only dang thing I see, it ain't increased.
I'll second that, I'll agree with that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, I'll ask for discussion, but hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, I think it's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now we have for your consideration that attachment thirteen is the budget that's been presented in public hearing and everything, put together, total ninety-four million, nine hundred sixteen thousand, seven hundred seventy-eight dollars. It is a balanced budget with revenues and expenditures.
All righty, do we have a motion to adopt this budget?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
We have.
Actually, we have a motion.
Yeah, have a motion to accept or adopt, we have a second. All right, now discussion, Chris?
The thought crossed my mind, on seventy, page seventy-six here of the revenue summary, it talks about the lodging, meals, and cigarette tax. Three questions, well, two questions, the cigarette and meals taxes, that factoring in the anticipated revenue increase from depending, okay. Now, on the lodging tax, have we had any discussions surrounding the private rental business that is existing in Smith County, like the VRBO or Airbnb or whatever acronym they go by, various agencies?
I know the Commissioner of Revenues Association and the Virginia Local Government, Virginia Local Government Managers Association have both tried to attack that because there's some revenues that's not being captured. It's difficult to get that Airbnb revenue, because I think state law has recently changed where they have to start reporting. So I can get with Mr. Richardson to check and see if we have those, because I'm sure we have some Airbnb in the county.
There is a few, I did a little detective work, and I found there are four listed, so it's not a huge amount, but it will grow, I think, in the future. And I guess a secondary question is over on page seventy-seven, referencing the water sewer revenues, is that reflective of our anticipated rates increases? Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, that was my only question.
Any other question, Giddy, I think you had a comment.
I do, and, you know, I prefaced by saying that I was on the Budget Committee and a part of the process. However, you know, tonight we've approved tax increases on cigarettes and meals to generate four hundred thousand dollars of revenue, because we were saying that we were short in covering expenses like for EMS. And Sean, how much did we have to appropriate to the different localities for EMS services this year?
This current year?
Mm-hmm.
I can add that up real quick, the.
Seems like it was around eight hundred thousand or so that we were budgeting to.
For fire, any of this together?
Yes, yes.
I can run and get the budget, is that?
That's pretty close, it's gonna be about four.
Yeah, okay.
So, you know, services are expensive, and this budget includes funding for our schools, which is really important. They're critical services that we're approving here tonight, for schools, for social services, for EMS, fire, for law enforcement, all the services that really are kind of mandatory, that we, they're not selected. My concern is, and I know also as part of this, and also with the schools budget, there's a five percent salary increase. My concern is, and I know also as part of this, and also with the schools budget, there's a five percent salary increase. And I'm the only one that keeps heart on this, but it's very important to me. Five percent of a hundred thousand is a whole lot more than five percent of forty thousand. So, it seems that we're getting a little lop-heavy. I don't know that people in the higher ranges should be getting the same percentage of salary increases, and that's still happening in the county. Sean, I had asked you, I don't think you provided it, but for the total cost, that it's going to cost us for these salary increases? Plus, it, it, the increased benefits amount?
I have that. It was a, we, we currently have a six million dollar, um, they, if, county, not counting schools, a six million dollar salary, um, personnel costs. You add in the, um, the, the five percent increase and the effect on the, the FICA and everything else, I think the total was around just under seven hundred thousand dollars total countywide.
So, the, the point that I'm getting at, like, for a hundred thousand, the cost would be five thousand dollars for salary increase, not including the benefits for retirement and social security. On thirty thousand, though, which is what a lot of support staff, you know, thirty thousand, it would be fifteen hundred. So, pretty soon, you're getting such a wide gap there, it's so disproportionate. And yet, we're asking taxpayers in this county, who the average income is forty thousand dollars a year, to continue to fund this type of thing. And the other thing that bothers me is that when we hire people, and we bring them in at decent salaries, I think, for management, and then, once they're here, they're, they're having to hire support staff, or there's different people, and real often a position with, if it's a managerial type of position, can cost us with benefits and their salary around a hundred thousand dollars. It doesn't take very long to really have your budget increased, and you've got to sustain that. So, you know, here we are, raising taxes to get four hundred thousand dollars, but we're going to have to be careful that people who are hired to do jobs can do those jobs, and also, that they don't have to keep hiring a lot of support staff. I think that's a real problem in this county. And I cannot go out and meet somebody that's making forty thousand dollars a year with family and, and good conscience say, I can vote to raise your taxes, I'm not going to do it.
We wish to pay it, we can't wait until the end?
Yes.
I agree with what you say, you're kind of confusing, because you voted for a tax increase, so I'm a little confused.
But we, but we're trying to fund the, the EMS and all that.
If, if, if I felt, if, yeah, and I do, I'm just confused. If I felt that the cigarette tax, the food tax, and water increase was going to save people's lives, and EMS, I get it. It's breaking our back. EMS is going to be costing. It didn't all go there. And this is not the person, but I got to be honest. You know, when you go hard people, and hard people, and we, we, we hire a county administrator, and we pay him what I think is an excellent salary, even if I was down to the school system, and you are required to pull a rabbit out of your hat. When it comes that we're hiring more people, and I totally think I'm reasoning against any of this food tax or anything. Because we're hiring people I don't think we need, and I'm not a big fan of yours because of it. And it's a good thing I don't have three more votes. And, you know, it's, it's just the way I feel, and I want you to tell me the same way, and I don't, I get it. I get with growing the, the county, I get it, the good ideals, but we're all, we're all trying to take, we're not taking steps up the ladder, we're trying to take one big step to get to the top. And I don't agree with them steps, and I don't agree with getting in taxpayers' pocket. If it's for school teachers, I'm going to vote for the school budget. I'm going to tell you in the back, I don't agree with the eighteen percent raise, but those are people who deserve to be paid. But when we go hard people for a hundred thousand dollars, we're not increased, increased our service, and we go, we're going to save the moon, and there's some real good ideals, I don't mean this wrong. They, I've heard some good ideals since you've come on the board, so I'm not hitting it. But I think we're climbing the ladder way too damn fast, and I think we need to scale back. I walked these halls for thirty-two years. There's nobody breaks their backs out in these halls. But I guarantee you, them people make forty thousand dollars, that you just increased their water rates and food tax in a factory. They're breaking their backs. I can guarantee, and to say, this will give me two hundred thousand, this will give me a hundred fifty thousand? I'm going to vote against you over time.
Mr. Chairman.
And it's my right, I guess, is all that I said here.
One more comment. I think that it's imperative, and I repeatedly say this, that we have an increment in salary scale for employees. I don't think, and this has been true in industry for years. People at the top of the scale do not get the same percentage increase as clerical or support staff. And I think that we cannot indulge in that luxury anymore on the backs of taxpayers, and I think it's got to change. Because they're not here tonight, they've put us here to represent them, and to vote the way that they think that we should for them to have a quality of life. And I think, you know, when we start adding positions that are a hundred thousand dollars, even in this budget, Sean, don't we have a recommendation for a finance person or whatever, and by the time you pay their salary benefits, it's going to be around a hundred thousand dollars? We had a safety manager this year, that, that came up to around ninety to a hundred thousand. So, pretty soon, when you start adding positions, you've really got quite an increase in your budget to sustain. Not that those services aren't necessary, but I think we're going to have to be careful. People who are hired to do a job are going to have to do it.
Do you have a comment?
I'm collectively putting my thoughts together, because I want to be eloquent when I speak, and I, and I totally understand everybody's point of view. It, it is a challenge to have a certain amount of money and, and determine where it goes. I do feel like the, the meals tax and the cigarette tax are necessary, because ours, when, when you look at the, the EMS situation, our citizens deserve to have the best care that we can offer. They should not have to wait forty-five minutes, an hour, an hour and a half for an ambulance to show up at their house when they have an emergency. And I know until you're in that situation, you can't really relate with that situation. But I promise you, if it was you that dialed nine-one-one, you'd want to be there quick. So, I, I don't, I, I don't regret agreeing to the, the meals tax and the cigarette tax, because I think that's important. I do want to say that I, I think you get what you pay for in, in who you hire. And if you want somebody that's going to do whatever they want to on the clock, with whoever they want to on the clock, um, you, you, that's what you're going to get. If you, if you want a good quality employee, then I think you need to, to hire a good quality employee and pay them what they deserve. Now, I agree with, with the increases, and we need to, to look at that. I think I would like to see some of the lower-paid people work, or be able to have a higher increase in their pay. But I, I guess for me, the frustrating part of it is like, we've been working on this budget since January, and as a person on the budget committee, I would have loved to have hea- heard all this five or six months ago, like now-
You did hear.
Well, I did from you, yes, I did from you, and I, and I appreciate that. I just felt like, you know, we're going in a direction, and, and part of working with the team is, is trusting each other. And I, I want to hear feedback from everybody, um, and Ms. Wyatt has shared that feedback, but I just feel like we wait until we get right here down to the eleventh hour, and then now we want to throw all this stuff out, and it's like, okay, well, what, what have we been doing for the last six months? It's not like we just came up with this yesterday. So, um, I, I'm ready to see this county move forward, and I, I do feel like we are moving at a fast pace, and I totally respect Mr. Stevenson's comment, and, and I'm not trying to deflect that, but too, too much was kicked down the road and not addressed, and now here we are, and it's an emergency situation to, to fix some of these things, and it's, it's unfortunate, but that's what we have to do.
Mr. Chairman, one final comment. I agree with Lori. However, being on the budget committee, I'm only one person on that committee. There are three, and three, two people, and then we have the county administrator who basically prepared it and brought it to us for approval. We didn't have as much scrutiny as we did last year when I was on that committee, and I don't think, you know, it was missed all this long meeting. However, and certainly, no one here would minimize the need for emergency services. We want that, um, and we're, and we're paying for it, and we've budgeted for that. But I do think that what we're saying as good stewards of people's money and good administrators is we're going to have to start to administer appropriately, that we're going to have to not be too frivolous and too free with taxpayers' money, and that's my main concern. I don't have much longer on this board, but I will continue to be here in this county. And I hope that there, there will be changes made, and that just because there might be money, doesn't mean that we add positions. Maybe we start to pay down debt that has a high interest rate, that's just good stewardship. So, that's my main concern.
All right, any other discussion?
Right quickly, I, I agree with Judy, and, and again, if all this money went to EMS, and I'm right proud of Mr. Crawford, I think we need, it was a hire we need, uh, and if all this money went to EMS and not new employees, and I give people my word, I wouldn't raise taxes, if it come down to health, I would have raised them, but it hadn't. And, and, and we did the need to move forward in certain issues, but we're trying to hand money, we're trying to do too much at one time, and we're trying to hire too many people at one time. And I believe in good salaries, and I don't got no problem paying a good salary, but I want a top-of-the-line job back. I want ideals, I want ways to conserve, uh, there is no conserv, and when it comes to EMS, we're going to bite that bullet. But that's not where all this money went, so.
All righty, I'd like to make a comment. I think we, we bounced around all over the place, I don't know if we have a clear anything what's going on, but, you know, uh, I think good people cost, when you, when you identify a need for a person in a position, to get the right person to cost. You can get someone to fill the position for a low fee and not do the job, or you can get someone, pay them what they need to be paid, and get the job done right and be more efficient at it. I think it's, the other thing, and it's something I have pushed for years, I think we need to str- stratify the pay increases. In other words, uh, lower, lower level pay gets a higher percent increase, if that's the way you're going to do it. When you do a flat five percent or two percent, or something that, that we've always done, I like it when you break it down to several, you know, it's, it's not stepped increases, but break it down where the lower level people get a higher percentage, that way, the a hundred thousand person's getting five thousand, and the, uh, twenty thousand person's only getting a small percentage. I, I, I just think you change that to where it's a lot more, a lot more, uh, fair. Having said that, uh, I'll call for the vote on this, and we're voting on the county budget. I believe, I believe we did have a motion, and we had a second, so. Uh, I'm calling, do you want a roll call vote, or just a?
It's your choice.
Yeah, roll call vote.
Let's do a roll call vote on that, then.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
No.
Dr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Ms. Deal?
Yes.
Mr. Call?
No.
All right, five to two. Going down to the school board for budget.
You have in your packet the, the, uh, draft budget that breaks down the, um, expenditures by category with a total of fifty-four million four hundred fifty-five thousand seven hundred eighty-seven dollars. Glad to answer your questions.
Any questions? Do we have a motion to approve the, do we have a motion to approve the school board budget?
So moved.
Do we have a second? Have a motion and a second, any discussion? I just like to say, I'm, I'm happy with the budget that the school board brought to us this year. I'm happy with the money that we're able to use from some major improvements to the schools throughout the county, we're not one area or whatever, and I hope we, we'll continue with that. Having said that, I'll call for the vote.
Mr. Chairman, could I?
Oh, go ahead.
The one thing, Dr. Carter, is I'm concerned about the band program at Marion Senior High School. And when you came to present your budget, I am the student for nothing the arts are and music. And that program is suffering greatly, and I really expect to see some management take control there. You know, when it's too pitiful for our band even to march in an Memorial Day parade, we've got some issues. So, and I think we're funding, we're positions there, and we need the support of the school administration in-
Sure.
Yeah, so that's the one caveat that I, I want to make sure that we understand. From my standpoint, that this middle school in Marion Senior High in my district, and I've had a lot of comment from people, including my own family, so, uh, this is something that's very important.
You will say changes.
I'd sort of like to add to what Judy said there, because I was at the VFW meeting the other night, we talked, Homemaker Band is very popular with VFW, because they come and march in our Veterans Day Parade, or our, our Memorial Day Parade. We can't even get our own bands to come. That, that speaks volumes.
Do you know why? The, the reason it was given to the band students was that the principal was embarrassed, because they were so small, and the band director would be signed, is that, that, that's the word I got? Which is really-
I can't speak to personal concerns.
Okay.
Just, we encourage maybe participating in future.
Well, you know, we, the band might seem like that, but now I don't want to draw on this long, but the band is, to be there to support the football team could be real different without a band there. Conversely, the football team doesn't go to any of the district means to the band. You know, I think there's a competitive, there should be a, an appreciation of both sides. And it's not just band, it's any type of music or arts. You know, we've tried to increase our budget this year to, to support local arts, and I think that's really important, Dr. Carter, so.
We're utilizing a map-
You go ahead, please.
-from the seat, or if there's-
No, you're right there, it's a map, we can all hear you.
Yeah, um, we, we receive some additional title four grant money, and that, that money is earmarked for student safety and arts-type activities, so that's one, one revenue piece, but additionally, um, I, I turned to my HR director, but, uh, so, um, change is coming, I'll, I'll say what I think. I think that's a valid statement, and I'll, I'll stop right there.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
But we, we are so pleased with, with what the school system has done, I know it's been a challenging title.
Any more discussion? If not, I'll call for the vote. Yes.
Mr. Atkins, Mr. Sturgill?
I'm staying.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Dr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Ms. Deal?
Yes.
Mr. Call?
Yes.
Yes, we may. We're going to take about a five-minute break here, we'll be back at, uh, about fifteen after.
I've gotten it to house, which, I got water bottles, I keep like six up in the freezer, and I take two out of the house, you know? They're good for about three to four hours, and I drink them, swap them back.